This is so cool.
Me try it again, can we have the translator, please? Is the translator there? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Diego Pons here today with Community Language Cooperative, the CLC alongside my colleague San Guzman. Thank you as usual for inviting us to your meeting. We're going to be using simultaneous interpretation to help create this space in English and in Spanish. Once I finish saying this in English, I'll repeat the instructions in Spanish. Then at that moment, we start the interpretation. When interpretation is on, you'll see that globe icon as interpretation there on the bottom right hand corner of your computer screen. We'll ask you to please select that globe icon and please select your preferred language. If you happen to be joining the meeting on your cellphone or your tablet, please be on the lookout for the more button or the three dots button so that you can select your preferred language this other way. If you're not fully bilingual, we'll encourage you to select your preferred language so you can utilize interpretation whenever someone's going to be speaking in the opposite language. If you are bilingual, you can just feel free to listen to everyone in the original language channel. Once you do select your language, you can always select the original audio if you would like to do so to not have to hear both languages at the same time. And as always, we like to remind all people, just please pay attention to this video what you're speaking. Just please make sure you're speaking at a conversational pace. And please make sure you don't pick up your reading speed. So thank you so much for that. Buenas tardes to todos and todas. My name is Diego Pons. I'm here today for part of the Cooperativa Comunitaria de la Justicia al Lenguaje, CLC. With my colleague San Guzman. Thanks as always for inviting us today to our reunion. We're going to compromise and continue participating and involve ourselves in the justice language. Using this interpretation simultaneously in Zoom to create this space in English and Spanish. And when it ends, this is activated, the interpretation. And when it's activated, you will be able to see this icon of the globe of the Earth that is the interpretation. Here in the top right of your screen, we're asking you to, for example, select this icon of the globe of the Earth when it appears on your screen and, for example, select your preferred language. But if you're participating in our reunion today, excuse me, on your smartphone or on your tablet. For example, look for the option that says more, which means more, or possibly the button of three points to let you select your preferred language in another way. If you're not completely bilingual, we're going to advise you to select your preferred language to use the interpretation when someone is talking in another language. If you're still bilingual, you can listen to us today in your original language. And as always, when you select your language, you can click to silence the original audio if you want to listen to both languages at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a little bit of business before we get to the fun stuff. I would like to make a motion, please, to amend the agenda to remove item 8.3.1, Discussion and Possible Action Concerning Possible Approval of a Resolution to Amend the 2023 Budget for the Purpose of Allocating the Lodger's Tax Arts and Culture Revenue Overage. The resolution was not included in the agenda documentation. We would like to consider this item during our August 1 city council meeting. Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Air Pro Tem Buell?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Just a second announcement first. I just wanted to let the public know that we're going to continue to make some adjustments to our agenda over the next couple of weeks. We are going to make these adjustments until we are at a comfortable place. It's new. It's a new agenda format. We're all getting comfortable with it. And again, just so you know why we're doing this is we're trying to make sure the council has the opportunity to have adequate time for discussion and action. That council focuses on business agenda items first, and then it's just a logical and well organized format. So we're kind of in transition. Thank you for bearing with us. Now for the fun stuff. So our town of Durango, Colorado, has a history of producing some of the best bikers in the world. And there are several key factors for that. Our rugged terrain in the Rocky Mountains, the ideal training ground, our extensive and well maintained trail system. Our cycling culture that is deeply ingrained in our community that supports and promotes our athletes. Our amazing training programs that starts with these athletes literally as soon as they can walk and sit on a bike and nurtures them and instills this love of the sport. I wish I would have started much earlier than I did. And as well as our legacy of champions. And tonight, we get to recognize some of those champions and dedicated athletes, and it's a huge honor for us as a council. In the last 60 days, we have had three biking national championships for road, cross country, and enduro racing, and Durango did well in all three. Riders from Durango won at least one event, if not more, at each of the national championships. As we discussed at our last meeting, we had two riders in the Tour de France. We had a host of other riders competing across the country on any given weekend in every discipline. The level of talent here based on our cycling culture that has been just developed over the last five decades is truly amazing, and it's only getting better. And it's really exciting to note that Durango will have the most riders representing Team USA at the upcoming World Championships in August in road and mountain biking in Scotland. So that's very exciting. We also have BMX kids that have been selected for Worlds as well. So today, we're going to take the opportunity to recognize some of the athletes from our three biking national championships that have taken place over the last 60 days. We are so fortunate to have some of the athletes joining us here today. Thank you for being here with us so we can recognize you as a city council and as a city of Durango. We're so proud of your accomplishments, your dedication, and your commitment to the sport. You are amazing role models for our community. We could not be more thankful. So thank you for joining us here today. And as I have some names of athletes that I'm going to ask to call out to join us up here at the podium so that we can get a photo. And as well of the coaches as well, please. And if I miss any athletes' names, please join us for a photo opportunity at the end so we can all be with you. So with that, I'm going to start with some of these names. I think I'm going to come down there. That's okay. Is this on? Okay, great. And the other thing, one of the hardest things that we have to do as counselors is actually pronounce names because, you know, sometimes it's hard. You know, these are the hard things we do. So for the 2023 Road National Championships in Tennessee in June, we had Quinn Simmons, who was the first place men elite, born and raised in Durango. We all know too, I'm sure we saw that he crashed at the tour and didn't look like it felt very good. I certainly hope he's okay. And we also had Colby Simmons, second place, under 23, born and raised in Durango. So that was wonderful for our road biking presentation. We had the 2023 Mountain Bike National Championships in Pennsylvania in July. We had Sabilia Blunk. Is she with us tonight? Women's elite cross country and short track, first place, Fort Lewis College graduate. Is she with us tonight? Will you please join us? It's like, thank you. We had Christopher Blevins. I don't think he's here tonight. I don't think I have seen him. He's the men's elite cross country and short track, first place again, born and raised in Durango. Riley Amos, men's elite cross country and short track, second place, born and raised. Karen Egan, men's elite cross country, sixth place, raised in Durango. FLC grad. We had Michaela Thompson, women's under 23 cross country and short track, second place, FLC student. We had Bailey Chiopa. Did I say it right? Okay, good. These are other finishers. I'm just going to say some names. Lauren Agalor, Ivan Sippi, Kobe Freeburn. Kai Loki, Emmett McManus, Liam Bezic. Riley Houston, Jake Sando. In the 2023 Euro National Championships in North Carolina in July, we had Asa Vermette, pro men enduro. Did I say that right? Okay, first place, lives in Durango. And Ainsley Haggert, women, pro enduro, fourth place, raised in Durango. And okay, thank you. Which one? Which? I'll start where? Thank you. Okay, okay. So we have some men's and thank you. So we have men's enduro and Asa, I said, Vermette, Ben McKenzie. Shane Ellis, Gunnar Ensign. In the enduro 17 and 18 men's, we have Will Albert. And Na- Na- Naonia, thank you, Naonia Love. We have Milo Deem. We have Amy Haggert, first place. You get up here. Oh my God. They put the age group on. That's, I mean, can't they just, you know? Women's, we have Opal Barber, third place, Asa Fermetti, and then we have, okay, and these I've already read. Amazing. Thank you so much. And then there's a few others I think that we had that I had on my list. I had Ben McKenzie. I just didn't want to, and Shane and Gunnar. Okay, great. Thank you. Is there any other athletes? Join for the photo ops, please, coaches? All right, council, you got to stand up and get in the photo. I'll stand up. Jose, you can get in.
Go on up, yes.
Here we are. Wonderful.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Take it to you. Yeah. All right. So for all you athletes, I want to thank you again. I want to thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for being here. Again, thank you for being such great role models for our community, for our youth, and just for representing us well. I'm going to be really excited to see what happens at the national championships. It'd be fun if we could all be watching that together. So council, would you like to say anything? Counselors, you got to say.
Just, okay, you said it all. So thank you so much. It's a privilege watching. I have a couple kiddos that bike and BMX and a couple in the BMX community going to Worlds. So that's super fun to see as well. So thank you for, you know, just continuing on the legacy of cycling in Durango and the amazing trail system we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, being a role model for all our kids. So thank you so much.
Okay, yes. Thank you so much. I'm really proud of the FLC graduates since I graduated from there. So that makes me really proud. And I'm just so thrilled that we have the facilities here to train champions. Thank you.
Being a kid from Missouri, we're only good at hunting and fishing. So a way to represent Durango really well. So thanks for inspiring all of us, young and old alike, and all of your expertise and skills. And yeah, looking forward to seeing where your journey takes you. So thanks again for representing.
I echo that. Role models, fantastic athletes. I look forward to keeping track of where you go and seeing where Durango associated with it is fantastic. And also under Angamayso, whenever you get started on that, it's something that you can work with. So appreciate it very much.
All right, one more big thanks to all these guys, can we? Okay. Well, that truly was the fun part of our meeting. So if you want to take a moment and leave, you're welcome to. Thank you. Thanks so much. All right. Moving on to I know, I would get keys to the city times 100. Presentations and proclamations. I should have let Karen say that. No items, no, any requests for excuse absences? Counselors, staff, no. City manager updates. I'm going to pass that to Jose to begin.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Before we get into 6.1, I did want to have an opportunity to introduce Clancy Nixon, our community engagement specialist. As we know, as we were talking about the the working groups and kind of getting out more with the collaboration with the community. Very excited to have Clancy on board and want to have invite her up to just introduce herself to the council and to the community. Very excited to have Clancy on board.
Thank you, Jose. Hi, everybody. Really excited to be here. My name's Clancy Nixon. I've been in Durango since about 2012 and have been working with some nonprofits, most recently well, for the last eight years with Adaptive Sports Association. So really looking forward and excited about serving the community in a very different capacity and building on relationships and helping to drive the community engagement efforts forward. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to 6.1, the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the auditor's report. And before we begin, I just want to set the expectations for the listening public. This is a presentation from our auditors. This is not a debate or process or on procedures. This is, this section is about receiving information from our auditors about their findings and the reporting on the annual comprehensive financial report. This is not about the budget. That will happen at a different meeting. This presentation and subsequent discussion will be limited to the annual comprehensive financial report. I will remind counselors, we've agreed not to interrupt presentations. Questions and comments will come at the end of the presentation. And lastly, this agenda presentation is not up for a vote. This is just a presentation from the auditors on their findings. And as such, I would like to move to limit questions and discussion on this agenda to 25 minutes total, given that we have several other important business items on our agenda tonight. And because it is just a presentation and not up for any voted voting, since there are five counselors, that would be five, that would be five questions, five minutes for questions, answers, and comments per counselor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please, Ben?
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
All right. So we can begin with a presentation.
Yes, absolutely. Well, good evening, mayor and council. Devin Schmidt here with Aid Bailey, who is online to present the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the city of Durango. This item pertains to financial excellence and high performing government, specifically item 2.1, which is to prepare the annual comprehensive report on time. So this evening, council and the public will be hearing from Aid Bailey, the city's external audit firm on the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. I wanted to take the opportunity while we're here this evening to look at and understand some areas of continuous improvement as we look at the annual comprehensive financial report. So I'm going to pop all of these up here on the screen. But so if we look at 2019 to 2020, the city finance staff was working on three separate audits at once. On top of that, this was the, 2019 was the first audit after the fraud. One of those audits was a additional internal controls audit that was conducted. We did have an additional forensic audit as well. And so I just wanted to take the opportunity while we're here tonight to look at the progress and the continuous improvement that this finance department has really made and overcome. Because it's outstanding. It really is. And so as we're looking at 2021 last year, and if we look at those issue dates for 2019, the first that was issued in March 16th of 2021, so almost two years later. In 2020, there was progress and that was issued in October of 2021. And for the 2021 audit, that was issued in September of last year with three material findings, an unmodified opinion, and back to receiving the GFOA award for financial excellence. For 2022, this is issued this evening. So after this meeting, staff will submit that to the state and to GFOA. This is the first time it's been on time since 2018. I wanted to also highlight that the accounting staff worked really hard to implement the GASB 87, which that's the Government Accounting Standards Board. And I know Paul Kane, our auditor, will discuss that with council as well. We had one material finding. But what was really special about this year is the cross training that the staff was able to go through to have a sustainable practice moving forward. We are implementing checklist for regular occurrences as this is our new standard. Staff development has really been a big key in this process. We've learned a lot. And so the other piece too that I wanted to note, as we're looking in 2023, we'll be implementing that checklist quarterly. We're going to start doing efficiency training. So thinking about our 23 audit here in August with Aid Bailey. Where our goal will be to issue in June, of course, with an unmodified opinion. And we're going to implement a corrective action plan so that we do not have any material weaknesses for our 2023 audit. As well as that, we will be implementing our GASB governmental accounting standards boards, those changes earlier so that we're more successful with those. And before I turn it over to Aid And before I turn it over to Aid Bailey, none of this would have been possible. The preparation, the completion of this report couldn't have been accomplished without our dedication and the efficiency of our dedicated service of the employees of the finance department. Each department member has our sincere appreciation for the contributions that they made for the long and hard hours that were that came into preparing this report. And so, we do have the finance team here, part of it today. And so, if you guys could stand, I'd really just like to say thank you for your efforts on this work. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Kane with Aid Bailey.
Thanks, Devin. I am going to share my screen. Let's see. I put some slides together to go through. Can you guys see the slides?
We can.
Okay, perfect. So, understanding that you guys are under a time crunch, I will keep this pretty brief, but I have you know, quite a few slides to go through. So, I'll go through them and just go through what I think are the key high level points of the audit, the results of those audit, highlights of the financial statements, and then give you guys time for questions and discussion at the end. So, first off, I'm Paul Kane. I'm the audit partner that was in charge of the city's audit, the airport's audit, and the single audit for this year for 1231 2022. And thank you for having us here today. I will echo everything Devin said, thanking the staff, thanking Devin, Diane, Helen, and the team for getting us to this point. I was going to go through the timeline of where we've been and that improvement that I've seen over the years since I've been here. So, this is my my fourth year working with the city, my third year as the partner on the city's audit. And it is just, you know, each year we've gotten this done sooner than the year before, and happy that we're here in July this year instead of September, and this will be issued to the state on time. So, she said for the first time, the first time that we've been involved in working through the issues that have happened since that 2019 fraud, and now here we are in a really good position, I think, as Devin said, working to get it even better going forward. So, that is great. The agenda for today, for tonight, I'll go through just a quick highlight of the audits and the results of those audits. So, the financial statement audit and the act for itself, the single audit, which is the audit of the federal dollars, the city spent during 2022, some required communication that we have to give to you as the board, and then give you time for questions at the end. So, first off, the financial statement audit, starting with pages 13 through 16 of that act for that you were provided to review. So, that was a draft, give you time to look through it, ask questions, give give the city a little bit more time to clean up all the little things that kind of nits and nats we find through that process. The audit's done, the testing's done, everything's done. It's just getting to this point to get a nice, clean, good document to be to be finalized after this meeting. Pages 13 through 16 is our independent auditor's report. This is what you pay us to do. These four pages are what we put together in this report. Just talking through it, not going to read all four pages, but at a very high level, this is a clean, unmodified opinion. And this is the best opinion that you can receive. So, the first page of the opinion is the first two paragraphs. It talks about what was audited, which was the financial statements. It goes through what those opinion units were within the financial statements of the city. And the second paragraph is our opinion. It says that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects and what statements they were. So, that's the best you can get. Like I said, any other CPA firm looking at these numbers should come up with the same opinion. The third paragraph is the basis for our opinion. So, what was it? Was we followed all applicable required audit standards, and we were independent, and we did meet all ethical requirements and responsibilities while performing our work. Beyond that is an adoption of GASB 87 leases paragraph. Adoption of, what do we call it? Adoption of a new accounting standard. So, it's just a paragraph we throw in there when something big happens, something new to point out to readers. There's a massive standard. It basically was probably the biggest standard I've seen for like at least 20 of them since 68, and your leases now are now on your balance sheet. So, you'll see you have right to use assets, you'll have lease receivables, you'll have lease liabilities. Essentially, all that stuff that used to just be income statement items are now on your financial statement front and center. We could point out a couple of places where that shows up, but there was a lot of leases. That was a really massive lift for the city this year to get that implemented and still be done in July. So, the second page of the opinion breaks down the responsibilities of both management and the auditors. Management is responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements. And also, they're responsible for ensuring that they've considered if there are conditions that raise substantial doubt about the city to continue as a going concern. And there was no doubt. You're in a really good position. Auditors are responsible for performing the audit in accordance with both generally accepted auditing standards, which we call GAS, and government audit standards, which is called GAGUS. And we've bulleted out what that means in that report. Basically, exercise professional judgment, maintain professional skepticism, and understand controls relevant to designing your audit procedures. We don't test controls, are required to test controls. We're required to understand the controls at a detail level enough that we can design our audit procedures based on that understanding that we gain. So, moving forward to the third and fourth pages of the opinion, the third page just goes through other statements within the financial statements. So, beyond your basic financial statements, you have required supplementary information. So, that's your management discussion and analysis in the front. And then in the back, you have a schedule of changes in pension liability and pension contributions. And then so, and then required budget to actual schedules, which related to your major funds. So, those are not audited schedules. We do read them and make sure they're consistent with what is being audited. Other information we give it in relation to opinion on just means we make sure it's consistent as well with the audited statements, and that's the combining schedules, the local highway finance report, and then other information we talk about is introductory section in the front and the stat section in the back. That is also unaudited. Moving on to the last phase, the fourth page of the opinion, it says that the comparative information in the back is consistent with our audit last year. And we give the date that we finished that report in September. And then there's a last paragraph that talks about other recording required by generally accepted government audit standards, which is a report on internal controls, which I'll cover near the end. Basically, did just read those four pages. So, at a high level, I'm going to just talk about a few minutes, just high level financial position of the city. So, some financial highlights, which are kind of called out on the first page of your MDNA. The city's assets deferred outflows of resources exceeded the liabilities and deferred inflows of resources by $388.5 million as of 1231 22. So, that's essentially like the retained earnings of the city. Overall full accrual net position, so the government-wide net income at the end of 2022, oh, the entire government, both government-wide and business-type, increased by $23.6 million. So, your net income for the year was $23.6 million. Twenty million of that was related to governmental activities. So, that compared to 21, 21, there was a $13.4 million increase in net income. So, our $13.4 million net income. So, it's a pretty good jump from last year. Fund balance of the governmental funds, just the governmental funds themselves, that fund balance increased by 14.5 million from 34.8 to 49.3, another really good jump, 41%. And then your unassigned and assigned fund balance of just the general fund, the main operating fund of the city was $21 million. So, versus 16.5 last year's 40, and that's only 46% of our general fund expenditures. It's almost two years of general fund expenditures in that fund balance. Moving on to, I like presenting from the MDNA because it's really the only place in your whole financial statement, you can see comparative activities. If you look in the basic statements, it's just 2022. MDNA, you get a good summary of the changes you're over here. So, looking at first, your statement of net position, which is your balance sheet for the government, you can see the total net position, the far right of the far right column over here. Go away. Went up from 364 to 388. It's a really big jump. The biggest jumps are assets. Assets are up over 20 million bucks. The majority of that increase is sitting in cash and investments. So, it's it's 85 million at the end of '22 versus 65 million at the end of '21. The airport, the airport joint venture is up about $8 million from last year. The airport had a good year too. And your capital assets are actually down 5 million just because depreciation exceeded the assets that you added this year. So, the big jump isn't related to just like non, like capital activity. It's actually, you know, cash. You're sitting on 20 more million than you did last year. There is one new asset within your assets, and that's your lease receivable. There's a million and a half dollars in the lease receivable, which is leases where the city is the lease or in the past, that would have just been lease income and cash received. So, now you have a lease receivable of about a million and a half bucks that's related to future cash flows that's discounted using a discount rate. And at 1231 22, it's about a million and a half dollars on cash to be received in the future on those on those types of leases. Your total liabilities are down about $4 million, which is really just related to the paydown of the long-term debt. If assets are up and that and liabilities are down, your net position is going to go up. And so, on the next slide, just a summary of the change in net position. So, it increased 23.5 million to $388 million. Governmental activities was the biggest piece of that, went up 20.8 million versus business activities went up almost 3 million. And of your net position, 70% of that is investments and capital assets, which is essentially your capital assets, net of depreciation, less related debt. That's how you calculate investment and capital assets. So, 70% of that net position is related to that, but 30% is not. Positive net position balance for both governmental and business-type activities. And now your summary of changes in net position, this is page 20 in the MDNA. I know it's really small. If you want to turn to that page and see this in more detail, but I did a slide just to kind of summarize changes versus trying to talk off this slide. The bottom line, the change in that position is your net income. So, 20.8 million in governmental activities and 2.8 million in business type for a total of 23.6. And the biggest changes, your revenues increased $14 million from 2021. 103 million versus 89 million. And the most significant increases were sales taxes, lodgers taxes, which increased due to the voter-approved increase from, I think, 2.5%, 2% to 5.25%. So, that increase resulted in about 2 million more in lodgers taxes. Then the airport just had a really good year. So, your share of the airport's income was about 7 million. Total expenses increased by 3.5, 3.8 million only. So, revenues increased a lot more than expenses increased. So, overall net position increased by 23.6 million citywide, which was that overall net income. Net position trends, I just like to summarize. Kind of, I've been doing the audit since 2019. So, this show the the growth in your net position, it's going in the right direction. Your your governmental activities started at 222.6 million in our first audit. And it's up to 267.6 million. Your business type went from 110, just nice steady growth. Those funds are doing well. 110 up to 120 million. Significant note disclosures, so a whole bunch of footnotes beyond your basic financial statements, not going to go through those, but I think that these key, these notes are the key ones to kind of dive into. Your accounting policies in note one, there is a big paragraph at the end of that note, which talks about GASB 87 and that lease standard and and what was added. So, we talked about the lease receivable, which is a million and a half, and there's also a deferred inflow that offsets that for a million and a half, and you recognize that revenue over the life of the lease. And you also added right to use assets for leases over your the leasing of about $500,000. So, not significant amount of assets where you were the leasing. It was more on the lease source side. But you can see the details of that more in note one. I think note 3A in your deposits and investments gives some good information about what you're holding. There's $85 million there and to break down to the cash and the investments and, you know, where that's invested, what it's invested in, the risk associated with that stuff. Your capital assets is a roll forward there, including the right to use asset, what was added as a result of implementation. There is a lease note as well, which we talked in more detail about those leases. The debt note talks through the changes in your debt this year. The only thing you would see new there this year is a lease liability. So, along with a lease asset, you're adding a liability related to the future payments due on the leases where you're the leasing. The pension note, and then just contingencies disclosed in note 4B. That's it for the financial statement audit that I was going to cover. Next, I'm going to talk about the single audit. So, this is the audit of your federal dollars. This, that was provided to you today. It's a package that looks like this. It's just the federal awards reports in accordance with the uniform guidance. So, first page of this is what we call the Yellow Book Report. This is the report we refer to in our audit before that very last paragraph. The main thing to get out of this is that we're required to consider controls for planning and performing our audit. We don't audit internal controls, and we don't express an opinion on your internal controls. We are required to communicate deficiencies that we identify during the audit that are either significant efficiencies or material weaknesses. And we did identify one deficiency in internal controls that we did consider to be a material weakness that we'll discuss shortly. Pages three through six are the uniform guidance report. So, this actually is an opinion on your compliance with the OMB compliance supplement, which governs essentially the federal dollars. So, we did an audit of your of compliance. We covered 40, over 40% of your expenditures as we were required to. And it was an unmodified opinion on compliance for major programs tested, which were Airport Improvement Program and the State Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which is the ARPA money that you received, and I'm the COVID money that was passed down. And you spent a portion of that in '22, and we audited the portion that you spent. That opinion just basically says the city complied in all material respects with the requirement, with the compliance requirements referred to. And it goes on to explain the basis for the opinion, etc. We did have one, one single audit finding as well that we will discuss shortly. Beyond those reports is our Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. Excuse me, that starts on page seven. So, this is a detail of your federal dollars spent during 2022. You maybe received money you didn't spend, but this is a detail of what you did spend. We're required to audit that, a portion of that, if you spend more than $750,000 in a year. And you typically have in our four years, we've done a single audit every year. And you can see in 2022, you had 18.9 million in federal expenditures versus only 3.8 million in the prior year. The biggest jump in that was AIP. So, the Airport Improvement Program went from 2 million to 15.3 million. That was one program we tested. ARPA funds were small, 420,000, but it's big enough. It's a high-risk program. It hasn't been tested before. So, we did test that. Of that ARPA money or state fiscal local recovery funds, you have 4.3 million that you still deferred to be spent in 2023 or 2024. That's it. I wanted to cover on that. Next on page nine is a summary of our results. So, really, this is like where to go if you just want to see a summary. This is required to throw in here by the feds. It just goes through the financial statement audit and the federal awards audit. We issued unmodified reports. We did have a material weakness. There was no non-compliance noted in either case. And we issued an unmodified opinion on the federal awards, and we did have a significant deficiency, which we'll talk about next. And this talks about which programs we audited. So, the Airport Improvement Program and the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. The first finding, which is beyond this report, starts on page 10, and this was a financial statement finding. And this really comes out of having a material audit adjustment. We had one audit adjustment, and it was material. And as a result of having a material audit adjustment, you have a material weakness because there was a control that failed that allowed a material error to occur. As a result of that, we have a finding related to that issue and is specific to that issue, which was related to this grant on the fiscal, the local fiscal recovery funds program. And the entry was simply to the deferred revenue that needed to be there. Too much revenue was recognized on that program. So, there was an adjustment to get deferred revenue stated properly, which was cash received by the federal government, less cash spent. The rest should be deferred to a future year because it's not revenue until you you spent it, since there's that eligibility requirement to use the funds before you can recognize the revenue. So, as a result, there was an adjustment to get that deferred revenue balance properly stated. And that was it for that finding. And Devin talked about corrective action. So, they will provide a corrective action plan that gets uploaded to the Fed, to the federal government's website with the single letter report. And the single audit finding is related to that State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds program. Essentially, it's over procurement, suspension of the barment. There was no non-compliance. It's an important thing to note. It was just controls over compliance was Is an important thing to note. It was just controls over compliance was part of your procurement process. High level, you need to do suspension and department verification procedures over certain vendors. Um, basically, there's a website you go to, you search if they're suspended or debarked before you. You work with them because you don't want to work with um, vendors that have been suspended or debarked. These vendors were not suspended or debarked. They were fine that they were vendors of the city. No, not. If they weren't, then you'd have noncompliance, but there is no noncompliance. It's just related to controls over compliance because evidence. That those checks occurred cannot be provided. So they may have been done. They were done on other ones that we did see. There were a few that we checked that evidence couldn't be provided. So. You know, that's just a lack of controls there that we couldn't verify it happened. So that's what the significant deficiency was. It didn't rise to material weakness. But that was it in our single audit. Everything else was clean. No noncompliance noted anywhere, like I said. A quick update on the airport. I didn't do a slide, but just the airport audit, we also audited the airport, which is a joint venture within the city's financial statements. Um, it is a going to be. Released the same time as a city's audit and it was also a clean and modified report. Um, everything went well. No adjustments, no findings within the airport's audit. Um, lastly, there's a, there will, there is a letter you receive. Which is required by A U C two sixty. That's an audit. Um, codification reference, it's called the communication with governance. It discusses. A whole bunch of things required to communicate. Um, I've broken them down just to a few quick things here on this slide. We talk about significant risks that we identified during the planning of the audit. These don't mean that there are issues there, but there are risks that we kind of tailor our procedures to address. So management override of controls is always a risk in every single audit. You'll see that listed as a significant risk. We test that through various um, control procedures, general entry testing, things like that. And proper revenue recognition is another risk. There's no issues or whatever. But we did have that one adjustment over revenue recognition. There was no other issues other than that, but we just, we do a lot of revenue testing due to that being a risk. Because revenue recognition is difficult. There's a lot of different revenue streams and grants and things like that. Um, there's a risk just related to getting the. I B N R liability appropriately recorded. We have seen an adjustment in that in a prior year. So that was a risk this year. And it's overall the implementation of Gatsby eighty seven. Um, like I said, it's a massive lift and it was a risk that it was just done appropriately. The letter itself goes through and just says we comply with all professional standards, including all ethical requirements. There's a paragraph that says that eighty seven was adopted. You keep hearing about this. We all just kept, you should have seen how much time it took all of us to work through it. We listed significant risks identified by the auditor during planning, which I just discussed. Um, financial statements do include sensitive disclosures because they're important to users of financial statements. And I previously went through what I thought were the most sensitive disclosures. We did have one corrected misstatement, which I discussed on the deferred revenue. That will show up in this letter and there was one uncorrected misstatement that was not material and it was passed on. There was no disagreements or significant difficulties working with management. Lastly, just a quick note on future considerations on Gatsby standards update, because while eighty seven was. Difficult, ninety six is going to be difficult as well. Um, it's essentially adding subscription based technology arrangement contracts to your financial statements, the same way you're doing releases. So. You know, your your license agreements are cloud based software. That's all coming onto your balance sheet. So there's going to be a significant amount of time spent to go through. Go through a lot of these agreements, see what sticks, see what has to get pulled on. And and like Devin said, we're going to start jumping into that in August. So. Uh, I don't think ninety four. Will have much of an impact on your city and then just, these are, they're just the big ones coming down the line, but ninety six is the big one. With that, thank you. I have time for questions as much as you guys have time to to ask them. So I am here. Here for you. Who's got the first question?
Thank you so much for the presentation.
Absolutely.
Counselors, do you have questions or comments?
I'm going to stop sharing.
Uh, no, no question really, but um, Devin, I just wanted to say. Wow, um, I've looked at a lot of budgets and P and L's in my um, business experience and. This is completely uh, foreign and expansive comparatively what I've, what I've looked at, but. Testament to you and and your your team in the back. I mean, what a, what a great job to not only. Get it done, but also to get it done uh, on time and with as few um. You know, market um, whatever those are mistakes. I know we used to call them mistakes, but just in findings. Um, and then um, Mr. Kane, thanks for uh, going over all of that. Um, and thanks for your time and making sure that we're operating transparently. Um, and open. So thank you for your time and and your team as well to make sure that, you know, we're all doing the best that we can to uh, with our taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Woodruff.
Well, I am really impressed, Devin. Thank. Thank you for your hard work getting us back on track because. When I was a civilian, not on city council, I was worried about when we had. Um, discrepancies in the uh, financial. Um, plan here at the city, but you know, going through a large. Audit like this and doing all the checking and rechecking and documentation and. You don't know what they're going to look at and then only coming up with uh, one material finding, I think that's just outstanding. You know, it's just wonderful. So thank you again and thank you, Paul Kane, for um, leading up this audit. I'm really impressed. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilor Yasi. Anybody else?
Yeah, first of all, thank you all for getting this in time and with the findings being very limited or problems. Uh, errors, whatever, whatever the words that we use. I I went through it and I have a couple of observations. And then I end up with a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Um, first of all, I I mean, from what I read and your presentation confirms that we are in an excellent financial position. Uh, revenues have gone up compared to last year's actuals, balances are very positive. And just some numbers that you presented are similar as mine. Cashing. Cash equivalents went up to eighty five million from sixty five million in twenty one. So that's very nice. Um, the change in net position at twenty four million, you had it more precise, twenty three point four or twenty four point three or something, but. I wrote down twenty four million, which in ten years ago was two point five million. So. Ten times higher and a very good improvement. Um, total unrestricted net position of a hundred and one million, which is almost tripled in ten years. Uh, which for our operating expenses as a city is, in my opinion, extremely high to have as a net position. Um, and then I spoke to Devin earlier, uh, our total fund balance in Open Gov. At the end of the year varies between ninety seven or a hundred and six million, and I think that would be the comparable. Uh, dollar amount for the. Net position, unrestricted net position. It's not completely comparable, but. We're in the same order of magnitude. So. All those things are extremely great. It's unfortunate, for example, that with such a good financial position, we still. Recently took out a loan or lease purchase agreement for about five point four million that will cost our taxpayers two million. Nonetheless, that was decision from council. And we can also, with such a good financial position, you could argue we are charging too much. But I think we should focus on assuring our infrastructures well maintained, roads, alleys are good. Transit service meets the needs as well as the library. And I understand that uh, Allison Baker already mentioned something about. Uh, those things along locating water supply lines, making sure that they are um. Intact and remain intact, similar. Um, as my comments in prior years, I also. Find the act for more closely with the budgetary fa- finances and I, Devin, you told me earlier today that. There are some efforts to certain parts line them up better. So it's easier to compare apples and and pears. And I have two questions here that I will put in an email. I'll just state them. But I'll put them in email. I don't want to take up the time of the five minutes. And one is that the program expenses for govern- general government. Doubled to twenty million over one year. It was last year was ten million. So that will be something I'll ask for clarification on. And then another one would be the expense for executive and. Illegal for the city managers went up. To one point three million from half a million in twenty twenty one. So that's a significant in- increase. So now I come to the real questions. Um, I always, and I mentioned this last year too, I have concerns with compliance and tracking of transfers. From enterprise funds to other funds. So. To the auditor, the question I asked last year, and I want to ask the question again so that the new counselors are aware of the answer. Your audit, and you actually mentioned it in your presentation, your audit does not verify. It's my understanding, and please confirm that, that your audit does not verify. The correlation or legality of a transfer from an enterprise fund to a non-enterprise fund. To assure that that transfer is uh, correct. The transfer, the the dollar amount arrives and gets sent and arrives, but you do not. Assure that the the use of that fund is according to the use required by the enterprise fund.
Um, I mean, is that, so the question is, are we verifying that every transfer was?
Correct. No, and your answer last year was no, but.
So. Good.
Yeah. Anyway, I, the the reason I said, and I'll, I'll just jump into a very specific question here.
Okay.
So my concern has always been that we have enterprise funds that have restricted use. And we transfer these out, some of it to the sure fund, equipment replacement fund. And there is no clear, not necessarily clear and sometimes not clear, at least not to me, I'll word it a bit more general. If those funds that are transferred out into another fund. Are actually being spent on a use that is associated with the enterprise fund. And. Um, so that was a concern I have on.
Sorry, that that is five minutes. So if we can conclude the question and get to an answer quickly, that would be great. So other counselors can contribute.
I, I mean, I can't tell you that we. I can't say that we test every single transfer and make sure that every one of them meets the specific city's requirement for that fund. We did test transfers out of the lodgers, the lodger's tax and following the requirement as stipulated where within that. Um, what was voted on and the percentages that that could be used for to the housing fund and transportation services, the general fund, etc. So the lodger's tax transfers were subject to testing, transfers from the street improvement fund. To other funds were subject to testing, transfers that were related to the cost allocation plan within the city. And what was transferred to internal service funds to cover those services was also transferred and made sure that transfers were in line with what was. Um, budgeted to be transferred to those funds. So we did test quite a few different things with those transfers.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Counselor Beal.
Yes, thank you. Um, Devin, I want to say thank you so much for the progress and the leadership you have with your entire team. The amount that you have grown since I have been paying attention to city politics. Um, and a- and here on city council, like what I've seen even in the last like two years. As a leader and as a mentor, I think is phenomenal. And I think the fact that we. Have our first ever act for getting filed on time since twenty eighteen just speaks volumes. Um, part of the reason I wanted to speak after Counselor Bosman's is I wanted to make sure it ended on a good note. In terms of, I think that when. As counselors, it's our job to fight for what we believe in and bring up topics that we're concerned about. But then, once the council makes a decision, it's also our job to stand behind that decision. And represent the city in the best way possible. So bringing up things like um, whatever you just brought up about passing. Uh, whatever we just did, sustainability, yeah. Um, it's been passed, council's behind it. It has nothing really to do with the act for right now and the topic we're discussing. And that's what's concerning to me. And so I want you to know that the progress we have made and. Um, the decisions that we make that are G F O A best practices in terms of. Transfers that we do that maybe are in question, like. We have stood behind that. And if we want to talk about that or change policy on that, that should come up during like budget discussions and other discussions, not. Just listening to and accepting the act for. Um, but I love the efficiencies and new standards that you are implementing, especially like going above. With the, what was it? The Gatsby eighty six that was mentioned a bunch of times? Yeah. So congratulations on that and getting that in there or eighty seven, Lisa, sorry, I wrote it. Um, and then also going, getting ahead of the game and going to the next bit in August, preparing for the next act for, I think if we can start thinking ahead. And now that we have time and we're not playing catch up, um, I'm just super impressed with your leadership. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Beal. And then I would just conclude also by saying, um. No material, yeah, just a high level, also a high level of thank you and appreciation. No material findings from our auditors is truly a significant milestone. And a tribute to the hard work, dedication and transparency governance that we've upheld. I first want to thank our auditors for your thorough examination. Your expertise and commitment to excellence holds us to the highest standards of accountability. So we sincerely appreciate it very much. I want to thank the finance team and staff. Devin, thank you also. Your part in this has been instrumental in arriving at the outcome that we've arrived at. So thank you so much for that. Um, I encourage everyone to take a moment and recognize the milestone, um. The collective accomplishments that have brought us here today. Truly, this is not, this is much more than just numbers on a balance sheet or financial statements. This is. Like Counselor Beal was saying, it speaks volumes to how far we have come. And we needed to come to this point, uh, and it feels very good to finally get here. Um, so I, as I, as we move forward, I would suggest let's not become complacent, complacent. Let's use this as a springboard for continued uh, improvement um, and excellence. Let's be vigilant. Let's continue to evaluate our financial practices um, and seek areas of improvement. But for today. I want to send my deepest appreciation to our auditors and to staff for their hard work in getting us here. I think it sends a strong message to the community. Um, and I'm contin- I'm, I feel confident that we will continue to chart a path forward. Of a financial responsibility and prosperity for our community. So thank you so much.
Mayor Yusef, um, Counselor Bosman's asked to be recognized to make a motion to extend discussion.
All right, uh.
You just need to give him.
Who's making the motion?
I uh, wanted to make a motion to have, I have a couple more small questions that I have the opportunity to ask those questions three minutes early.
So you have a motion governing the proceeding right now, limited to twenty five minutes, five minutes each. She's making a motion for additional time to speak.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Yazi?
I.
I'm sorry, could you say it again?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Sure.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman's?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tembeul?
Yes.
So as I understand the motion, you're granting an additional three minutes to just Counselor Bosman's or do you, or is it for the whole board?
I think it's got to be for the whole board if one person has it. Thank you.
I had a couple of small questions as a follow up to what you mentioned. The lodger's tax was recognized as rev- so first of all, I appreciate everything that was done. Yeah, I, don't get me wrong. My prior comments are only positive in the way that we are in such a great financial position. Um, my question here would be on the lodger's tax, uh, there is in the transportation service fund. Which is running a negative operating income. Um, so my question to you is, is the lodger's tax allocation included in full in that revenue? Or only what was transferred out of the lodger's tax fund?
I'll have to get back to you on that one. I don't have that information in front of me right now.
Okay. Well, that's, I'll send that in an email as well. And then the right to lease, to use leased assets, obviously you explained the change in the, in the governing rules there.
Yep.
Um. The numbers are quite different from the year before on the lease. And the the lessy and the least lesser, sorry, lesser and lessy amounts.
Yeah.
And what, what constitutes the changes is a very detailed question and Devin probably might be able to better answer it, or I can send it in an email.
What, what is that? So the change between what, so like?
So if you look at last year's uh, act for the, there, the less C amounts and the less sore amounts annually. Are included, maybe not in the same structure because here it's broken down in interest and the actual less, less C amount.
Yeah.
Um, but the amounts itself differ quite a bit as well. So I was just wondering. Um, but the amounts itself differ quite a bit as well. So I was just wondering what constituted the change, not the reporting change, but the actual, what, what is the change in the dollar amount? And now I can follow up maybe better with Devin because.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot that goes into evaluating every single lease and it's so that what gets recorded essentially without going into much detail, too much detail is just your present value, the whole future payment stream into, you know, if it's a five-year lease, you're taking that five-year payment stream and you're present valuing it back to today. And that's what's getting recorded versus like, maybe if you're talking about the lease footnote in the prior year act for it showed a year by year, um, commitment schedule over the next like five years or whatever, but typically goes into those schedules. So it could be the time period versus an entire balance of what you're going to receive or what you're going to pay discounted back versus like just the actual cash going out the door and a commitment schedule. So you have those two kind of differences. And then also some of those leases maybe fell off, maybe were short-term, maybe were regulated leases in the airport, maybe were, there's a lot of different things that scoped it out of being a gas B 87, Lisa brings it on at the financial statement. So it's a, there's a lot of determination, determining factors for every single contract you have to go through and determine if it, if it is um, under 87 or not. So you'd, really to answer your question, it'd be a lot, a lot of going back and forth to really figure out what was there that isn't there that got brought on. Um, I don't know if you, does that kind of answer your question?
I appreciate it. I, I, I'll send an email and follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, any concluding comments? No? Good. Uh, Jose, Jose.
I'd just like to, uh.
Why don't you take three?
Just quick, I don't know if I'll take three. The first one, just to give a thank you to Devin and the finance team, uh, Helen, Teresa, Rhonda, uh, and Diane for, for your hard work. I know there's a whole other team behind it as well. So just wanted to give you all a, a public thank you very much for, for that. And then in an effort to, I think, at least take one of those questions, you had a specific one about the city manager's office and the expenses that, uh, have increased. Uh, when I first got here in the city manager's office, it was just myself and the executive assistant. As you know, through the budgets, we have moved, we had moved budget over, which would have been Devin, uh, Kat and Elliot. So three more positions moved from finance into the city manager's office. And then also when Aaron promoted from HR director to assistant city manager, her salary then fully moved into my office. So when you look at their salaries, benefits, plus office supplies, training and travel, you will see with that increase, a decrease from some of those other budgets as they moved over to my side.
I appreciate that. Quick response.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This item on the agenda. Thank you. And thank you again to our auditors. We appreciate it. All right. We're moving on then to item number seven, public comment. Um, Ben, can we get the signup sheet for public comment? And this is, this, um, to be clear for the public, um, this public section is for public comment on items we are considering in our business, business meeting tonight. Items that we will be voting on this evening. This is also we will, we were, where we will take public comment for our public hearings uh, in section 11.1 and 11.2 of the agenda regarding, um, amending our ordinance for code of conduct and code of ethics, as well as authorizing a contract to exchange real estate between the DFPD and the city of Durango. To be clear, this is not the time for public comment, um, for items not currently on the agenda. That public comment section will be in, uh, separate, considered separately under item number 16. We will still limit public comment to three minutes. Council will not respond from the dais. We ask that you, uh, direct your comments to council on the dais. And when you come to the podium, please state your name. Uh, and whether you are a resident of the city. Tim Walsworth.
Hello, thank you. My name is Tim Walsworth. I'm not a resident of the city, but I'm here today, uh, in my role as executive director. I can say my title of the Durango Business Improvement District or the bid. Uh, as you guys know, and if, if not, just to say it, bid represents about 400 commercial properties in the central district, central business district and the North Main District, and we work for all the businesses in those 400 properties. Um, I'm here to comment very quickly on 11.2. Super excited that this land swap is about to occur. Uh, it's been a long time coming. Um, we need a downtown fire station, been needed for a long time. You guys know all of that. And so congratulations and thank you to Fire Department, Fire Protection District and Jose and the staff for getting, getting it to this point. Um, as this land swap concludes, bid would like to request some type of public statement in support um, for both the city and DFPD for the Camino del Rio Underpass project. And here's why I ask that. Uh, the bid has been advocating for this project for many years, and we would love to see it completed in the near future. The Camino Underpass, it's a city project, it's not a DFPD project, but it will emerge on the west side of Camino on what will very soon be DFPD land. Um, I would remind you guys that this project is included in the following city plans, 2017 comp plan, Camino del Rio Character District, it's, it's noted in there as well as the 2016 multimodal master plan. Um, in 2020, we did a feasibility study here, identified 12th Street as the best location for this crossing and that an underpass was the way to go. And I just add a couple more things. Um, I think it's needed for a couple of reasons. Safety, helps people get to downtown easy without dodging cars. Environmental and congestion concerns, fewer cars in downtown, that's better for downtown. And economic reasons, people come to downtown to shop, to dine, to access services, all those things that make more sales tax for the city and for other multimodal projects. Um, I'm not wanting to slow this process down. It's taken probably too long to get to this point. I'm only wanting to try and to keep the opportunity for this long-needed um, project, keep it alive and well. And so consider something like this. The city of Durango and Durango Fire Protection District both strongly value an underpass at 12th Street and Camino del Rio to connect three of Durango's best assets, downtown, River Trail and the Powerhouse Science Center. We pledge to work together to see this long-needed project become a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, Bill Carver, please.
I'm Bill Carver. Uh, thanks for letting me speak. I am a resident. Um, coming to you as a downtown property owner, longtime business owner and also the founder, uh, one of the founders of the powerhouse and the capital campaign chair. Uh, and that's built on city property. So what I want to, uh, address and congratulations to the fire department and the city. And again, I don't want to say anything to slow the process down, but I did want to, um, speak to the powerhouse access. It is the only road that goes to the powerhouse. So there is a fiduciary duty, duty of the city to protect access to its other city properties, including pedestrian access, as you know. And I haven't read the contractor, seen the site plan because it, site plan hasn't been publicly. So maybe this is all addressed, but I just, uh, kind of, uh, wanted to make my voice known on it. Uh, so parking along the road and other parking areas is important to the sustainability of this, what it will, is a landlocked parcel. And so that road is important, the parking along that road is important. The, I would, as Tim mentioned, it is mentioned, I could find at least 11 citations in existing city plans that would speak towards putting some sort of easement across this parcel uh, to protect pedestrian easement. And some of them aren't suggestions, they're actually a requirement, like as policy 2.2 of the 2016 multimodal requires sufficient right-of-way or easements with development, redevelopment or annexation to allow future multimodal infrastructure to be installed by the developer. If we can't slow the contract down to put an actual easement in there because uh, for any reason, I would suggest you add language such as both parties will put a good faith effort towards meaning any easements as needed. And that does put the onus on the fire department that will own the land to come to the table in good faith. And unless you have language in that, as the new owner of the property, they're not required to do that. I mean, they probably would of their own volition, but they don't have necessarily the same intent and fiduciary duty as you all have. So some sort of language, uh, as Tim mentioned, the comp plan uh, does mention constructing underpasses across the major highways, uh, grade separated crossings of major streets. Um, it, the comp plan says acquire property between ninth and 12 for pedestrian underpass. Obviously that includes an easement to get from the portal on the west side to, to the river trail. So, you know, I underpass without some sort of easement to other city sidewalks, you know, it would just be orphaned. So you really need an easement. And I assume the site plan has room for one. So I just want to make sure the contract includes something like that.
Bill, Bill, time, time's up if you want to wrap it up.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you speaking with us. Um, Dean Brookie.
Thanks. I'm Dean Brookie, 970 East Fourth Avenue. And I just want to speak on, as a former mayor and having followed this issue for a number of years now, I recall back in, uh, 2015 or 14 perhaps, uh, my first term, we were talking about the idea of, uh, the city of Durango acquiring the nine R building and making that the campus and making this essentially governmental row on Second Avenue here. So I'm really excited to see that piece of this whole transaction happen. And, um, um, it couldn't have happened in sequence without the fire department stepping up and kind of forcing that issue and acquiring that property from the, from the school district. So it's happening, that's happening. And the conversation that you've maintained throughout this whole process to come to this, this kind of land trade tonight, I think it's the right place for the fire station ultimately. And, uh, and I'm really excited about the opportunity that the city has in utilization of the nine R admin building. So with that, I'll say congratulations and very supportive. I'm also a new member, I guess, of the facilities committee of the powerhouse. So I do have a new vested interest. Hopefully it's a new, a new face and a new little bit of mentality of regarding utilization of that city of Durango facility. So, um, like Tim and like Bill, I think we're, the committee and the board of the powerhouse would like to see all those, uh, easements put into place to maintain the fact that, that maintain the existing parking and the existing access to that city facility in perpetuity. It's, we don't want to lose value of the powerhouse site by landlocking it in any way. So as much vehicular and pedestrian access as we can provide to that city amenity, I think will serve the city in the long run. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean. I think we have, uh, Ms. Marbury, who would like to speak about, this is about an agenda item on the agenda. Okay, thank you. And then I'll be seeing, asking if we have anyone who would like to comment virtually.
Uh, my name is Sweetie Marbury, and I too am a former mayor, and I congratulate the city council in the swap of the fire department and the nine R building. I think it's very wise to do that because you'll be able to put this building on the market, uh, put the police department on the market and redevelop these buildings, which will help to, um, minimize the debt. And I, we haven't talked about the debt yet, and we haven't talked about the remodel. But as, um, Dean Brookie mentioned, we were all part of that discussion on facilities. I believe it was in 2015 when we did a facility study. And I recognize there's a, a great deal that must be accomplished in a remodel. But I'm a, I'm a person who believes in upcycling, not tearing down history. And so I congratulate the fire department and the city of Durango, uh, for working together. And I'm really pleased that we have an opportunity to move our wonderful Durango Police Department out of that leaky shoebox across the street. That's what's truly, truly necessary. And I do believe that citizens will support you if you ask for a reauthorization of the 205 sales tax. And that's something I would hope the city council would start addressing and having town hall meetings where people can talk about that because we all love our police department and depend on them so much as well as the fire department. So thank you so much for the wisdom of that swap. It will be a delight for our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marbury. Do we have anyone who would like to comment virtually?
Yes, Mayor, uh, John Simpson. I'm going to allow him to speak now.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Yusef, John Simpson, city resident. I'm here to speak on item 11.1, the ordinance amending the code of ethics. I'm supportive of the deletions in the ethics code. I suggest going further and eliminating the board entirely. I have a lot of personal experience with the code and this board, but it's not my personal experiences with the ethics board that forms my opinion that this board should be eliminated. It is the waste of money that has been expended on the ethics complaint filed by counselor Yusef, counselor Beal, Barbara Noseworthy and Kim Baxter, where I've really seen what a poor system is in place. The ethics board is nothing more than a kangaroo court. The board members on the ethics board have no special training or qualifications. I've heard board member Burgess say she was ready to convict Olivier simply because she is friends with the complainants and trust them. I've seen the contract attorney and the city clerk allow ex parte communication between the complainants and the ethics boards. Board member Burgess steadfastly argued that there should be no public hearing, clearly ignoring due process so that she may come to a predetermined conclusion based on her personal relationships. And what if someone is convicted by the ethics board? City council then must decide what to do. You five already have the power to remove any member of any advisory board, a city manager, a city attorney, or a city judge. You shouldn't have the ethics board doing the bidding for you. The city manager has full control over his employees and should implement his own expectations. And the people can recall any city counselor if needed. There's a system in place. State laws remain in place to prosecute the worst violators for lesser violations, such as a case where a city official influences the vote of an advisory board so that his business obtains a financial grant. The city can step in and say the grant will not be awarded to his company. Also, the ethics board has been weaponized to threaten people to get in on the majority opinion. The city is overplaying the concept of act as a body. Pretty discourse is always leading, leads to better discussions, decisions. There are multiple examples of telling people they must act as a unit. But the best example is the ethics complaint against Olivier, where the complainant is written because Olivier is questioning the library tax. There's never been a vote to have a library tax, and he's trying to bring facts to the surface. But the other counselors would not look at financial data with them and reports, but instead filed an ethics complaint to try to silence him. Please consider eliminating the ethics board in its entirety. Mayor Yusef?
Thank you. Moving on to item, unless there's anybody else for comment, I think we'll move on to item.
Uh, no mayor, no one else is.
Great. Moving on to the consent agenda, please. Ben, if we could have a reading.
Yes, thank you. Uh, item 8.1 is approval of meeting minutes and 8.1.1 is approval of the city council study session minutes for July 5th, 2023. Uh, there's no final reading of ordinances. Uh, 8.3 is adoption of resolutions by consent, which there's just the one remaining item, item 8.3.2 discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation to the airport fund for the replace AR FF vehicle and acquire tools project. And then there are no items under other administrative items, 8.4.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, may, uh, roll call, please, Ben.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yazzy?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef.
Yes. All right. We're moving on then to item, uh, number 11, 11.1, consideration and first reading of ordinance, oh, 2023, oh, oh, 12, amending in pert, in pertinent part, the Durango Code, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 7, Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics, Section 2, 201, definition submitted by city attorney, Mark Morgan. Would you like to present this first, Mark? I was also going to see if there's, we have a new agenda format, so I was going to see if there's any additional public comment. Do you want me to do that first or after?
I always encourage additional public comment. I think you've met the requirement with the public comment you had.
Just now.
Just now.
Okay.
A whole lot to say about it, but you get a motion on the floor in a second. I'm happy to answer any questions that council.
Okay.
You just might want to put your microphone.
Thank you.
Okay, can we have a motion? I, I got the message though. Thank you.
Yes. I thought we assigned that last time when we introduced it. Is that not correct?
Is it, is it in the thing? Is it the oh, 2023, oh, oh, 12?
Um, I'll move to, um, am I moving for consideration and first reading? Is that what I'm doing?
Motion to amend.
Or a motion to amend. Okay. Or a motion to amend, okay. I.
A motion, you hereby, you're going to hereby ordain a motion to amend the code as follows.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to amend the motion or amend the ordinance O dash two thousand twenty three dash zero zero one two. In pertinent part, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Seven, Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics, Section Two dash two zero one dash, or definitions submitted by city attorney Mark Morgan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion from council.
You can just vote.
All right, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Bossmans?
Yes.
Councillor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Councillor Yazi?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to eleven point two, consideration and first reading ordinance O two thousand twenty three oh oh thirteen, authorizing a contract to exchange real estate of twelve thirty five Camino del Rio and two oh one East Twelfth Street between the Durango Fire Protection District and the city of Durango. Do I have a motion?
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance O dash two thousand twenty three dash zero zero one three, authorizing a contract to exchange real estate of one, two, three, five Camino del Rio and two zero one East Twelfth Street, including two fifteen East Twelfth Street between the Durango Fire Protection District and the city of Durango.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Council discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things, especially since of public comment. Because we had a presentation at the Alliance meeting that actually did that deputy chief Randy Black presented at and had a site plan and I believe you are getting, or the powerhouse board and bid board are getting presentations as well. And I just want to note that when I saw it, there's actually, and I think it's preliminary, I'm sure we could probably talk, so it's all preliminary, but there's more parking, shared parking for the powerhouse instead of less, so that it was great for me to see because I had some similar concerns. And then in the swap, if you're like looking at it, the River Trail, which you're, you know, that continuous access, that is still, am I correct, city property? As well as the park that's there is still city property that was taken out of the contract between the DFPD and us. And so a couple of the concerns you brought up, which are great, and I'm super, you know, I definitely want our community that's involved, and this is such a great asset, the powerhouse downtown, the fire station, like to know that we are thinking about these big measure items. And so I don't know if you want to add anything, Jose?
I do have a presentation.
Oh.
If you would like me to do, oh, that's okay. I just don't want to get in the way, but.
Presentation.
Definitely.
We're just moving so fast.
Again, don't want to get in the way of progress, but if y'all want me to go ahead and go through the presentation, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay.
At the council's pleasure. Okay. Uh, Mayor and council, I guess we've kind of already little talked about it, but we have is an ordinance authorizing a contract to exchange real estate of one, two, three, five Camino del Rio and two oh one East Twelfth Street between the Durango Fire Protection District and the city of Durango. A lot of this presentation for those that are in attendance was what was given at the DFPD city council joint meeting. And so just want to do touch a little bit upon a, a timeline. So about a year ago today, the city did enter into an MOU with the Durango Fire Protection District after their identifying River City Hall site as the site that works for them for a downtown fire station. In August, we amended that MOU of twenty two, thinking that maybe we could possibly do a joint police and fire station on the River City Hall project, property. We did hold a public hearing, not public hearing, but a public town hall on November of two thousand twenty two. Received some feedback from the residents about a possible joint fire station and police station at downtown. In January, we did have a joint meeting with the council and the Durango Fire Protection District Board, where Hal and myself did mention that because of the site size limitations, as well as construction costs, having a joint police station and fire station was, was not feasible. At that point, we did bring up to the council and DFPD board about the possibility of doing an exchange of the River City Hall site with DFPD for their site that was the previously owned nine R administration building and big picture sites. Direction was given to go take a look at the feasibility. We did hold a public open house here in the city council chambers in March of two thousand twenty three, where, or just past March, where we did get some public input in regards to repurposing the nine R site for a police station as well as a city hall. The overwhelming reception was all positive. There were a couple of concerns really about the parking and making sure that if we were to repurpose this site, that there was adequate parking in which it would not affect the neighboring neighborhoods or businesses, as well as the second concern of ensuring that we preserve the historic nature of those buildings. So those are things that we did take into consideration. In May, a couple of months ago, we did reach a tentative agreement, agreement pending approval to exchange the River City Hall site for the DFPD owned nine R administration and big picture sites, presented that deal, which I'll go in a little bit here today. But direction was given by both boards to move forward and bring those contracts for your review, which is where we're here, this is where we are today. Just a quick one, as, as we mentioned, the, the value of the respective properties, it was important for us to make sure that both entities were receiving fair market value. We did use Bob Allen with more than thirty years of experience and knowledge in Durango and La Plata County to come up with what he saw as the values of both of those properties. He did see the DFPD owned nine R property at six point nine million, which represented what they purchased the property for. And then the River City Hall property at three point nine million, which correlated with the recent C dot appraisal of the River City Hall property. Understanding those parts, we did look at the River City Hall site, noting that it was all in one parcel. Here's where we kind of can answer some of those questions. We did go ahead and with this, as we're subdividing, going to maintain the Animus River Trail as well as Iris Park and the parking areas that are there, as well as DFPD agreed to dedicate the road as well as the right of way that's adjacent to it, to the city. So that will all be preserved in its state that it is today. That subdivision will continue on and we're looking at a mid-November timeframe for that to be completed. We are consistently working through that process. This contract will have the, while the agreement will be approved, the official swap would have to be within ten days after that subdivision is completed. So looking to take physical acquisition of the properties in mid-November timeframe. Part of this that we also talked about, and I know Randy had sent an email out that I had forwarded to the council was him expressing the fire departments and fire districts intention to work with us in regards to the Camino underpass. We have heard that there are definite favorite or favor to have that Camino underpass work. We are working through it from a multimodal standpoint in the transportation department. There are three options that we are still evaluating to find out where that comes through and looking at the feasibility still. So there's still a lot of things that are moving in play as to exactly which location will be determined as the most suitable location. I am sure that there will be tons of public comments on which ones those could be. We did talk with Randy this afternoon. He did mention that all three of those possibilities would work on the site plan that they have. And again, their continued commitment to working with the city to ensure that the Camino underpass could happen. But as we know, as we go through design, things may change, parts might go through. We'll continue to work with DFPD. I'm sure that even after this agreement is complete, we can have more discussions as a joint board to make sure that we're keeping each other in, in communication and understanding of what those next steps may be. But at this point, and I know Randy's here, if you'd like to ask him a question or to confirm that, but his confirmation was they are very much a partner with us and excited to work with us in that portion to make the Camino underpass a reality. So just a quick bit on the funding part, three point five eight six two seven five is the difference in the properties. There is showed a three million dollar difference, but again, we're taking some of the property and holding it. So that difference for the price for the purchase for the city to give to Durango Fire Protection District is three point five million. It is going to be recommended to come from our general fund balance in that opportunity fund. This will still maintain our twenty five percent reserve fund to include the Tabor requirement as well as our general fund policy reserves. As you will see on August first, if this ordinance continues to move through, which is the next meeting, will be the final reading of this ordinance. Also, in accompany with that, there will be a budget resolution to appropriate that general fund balance for the expenditure of this property. The next steps, the Durango Fire Protection District Board has already approved that agreement. It is in the packet that they have signed it. Again, as I had mentioned on the August first city council meeting, our next council meeting will have two final actions on this transaction. And then closing would be no lighter than ten days after the recording of the subdivision plat, which we are assuming right now will be in a mid-November timeframe. We also, before I get to this recommended motion, there is one thing I do want to point out is that this does acquire the property. We still have work to do in regard to the design of what that looks like, working on setting up a timeline of how that looks to make sure that we're getting public inputs within those and holding public comment periods in regards to the design and getting that public input and gathering from the surrounding neighborhoods, businesses, as well as the community. And as discussions have shown, we have targeted or council has targeted and identified the quarter cent of the two thousand five sales tax, if we do a reauthorization, not this quarter cent that goes with parks, but the quarter cent that was going to Florida Road and the library as a possible way of funding this with a what I would call a very, very preliminary discussion that we would look at it for November of two thousand twenty four. Obviously, we have more discussions on that, but that would be, that sales tax authorization would be required or some other funding in that amount to get the project actually construction ready and funded. But I did want to make sure that everyone knows that there are still community input steps that are along the way. This just secures the site for the city to begin doing more planning and more design. But also, I think more importantly, gets Durango Fire Protection District on the way to going through. In closing, I would just like to say how appreciative I've been of the city council's support. I'd also like to say with Hal and Randy and working with them when we came through this with all the iterations in many years that we've been through. When we look back and say in July of two thousand twenty two, if we would actually make it in twelve months, just like our MOU would say with an agreement and the ability to move forward, I think that the community was looking for us to work together and come to a solution that brought this to a close and assuming the approval, and we'll see where that goes. But I do want to say it's been a pleasure to work with the Durango Fire Protection District in getting this deal completed. And the recommended motion is on the PowerPoint slide.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, Councillor Yazi.
Thank you, Jose, Hal and Randy for working on this land exchange. Okay, Jose, now, from what I heard, there is a commitment to put some kind of language into the August first finalized proposal ordinance that there's a possibility for an underpass there.
I would say that there is a commitment that has not been placed in the contract. That is not in our contract portion of the agreement because we don't know specifically on which track that would be selected. What I would say is I would have mentioned, and I'd probably have Randy come up here to, to talk on the DFPD board, but that the discussion has been to get the land swapped completed because that is something that they're really needing to go through. And I am sure that we could have negotiations or we could even talk about, I think, the statement that Tim had suggested that I would believe that we've already made, and I think Randy has made in his email that they're committed to working together. Randy, I don't know if you want to just come and kind of address a little bit that from your side.
Well, city council, Randy Black, Deputy Chief with Durango Fire, not a city resident. Will mimic Jose's comments. It's maybe been a little bit of a rough go over the last eight years, but very happy with where we are today. And the fire district couldn't be more happy to be finally getting the resolution and being able to build this station for our members and for the community. So, so we really look forward to that. As Jose stated, which we've been meeting on constantly, we, we've met with a number of folks who are pretty big proponents of the underpass with Rick Feeney, one of the original kind of architects that came up with the idea. We've met with him. There is nothing that is in our plan that, that we've worked on that will prohibit any of the three options that have been presented. As was stated in the email that I sent back to Tim, we, we plan on partnering with you to work on that. That's obviously a large valued item to the community. We don't want to stand in the way of that. That doesn't make any sense. We, we've learned our lesson of, of not working together with the public and doing the right thing. So, so we want to make that happen. And just in quick reference, we have met with a few members of the powerhouse board, we're meeting with the rest of the, the full board tomorrow to show them the plans. I've gone on Tim's schedule to meet with the bid board, August tenth. And then we also have our public engagement meeting on July twenty sixth at the powerhouse at five thirty to show those plans out to the public. We feel like we've got, and we're, we're done moving the boxes enough where we feel like we can finally get that presented and, and show that out to the public that we didn't want to let that out too early while we were still making moves based on city staff input. So we feel like that's ready to go.
Great, thank you. Councillor Yazi, did you have anything else?
No, thank you very much for letting me know. I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councillors?
I know I spoke a little bit, but.
Sure, yes.
Is that okay? Just a couple of little things. I, I did want to say, I totally, I know we did a town hall already about the building, but I think it's great what Sweetie mentioned and great for our community engagement specialists coming on, especially as we like rally for that two thousand five reoff that council's already kind of, you know, put that support towards. Whether it's a working group or whatnot, I just want to stress that I agree with that as well. I want to say, I think it's been, how many properties have you guys looked at? Twenty five, thirty two, thirty two properties that didn't work, don't work for various reasons now. Even properties that originally you thought were going to work aren't, won't work now. And so I know it's been like a long go, but I couldn't be more happy with the, you know, current partnership that we have. And I just look forward to working, you know, with you guys more and then seeing the final result of a new fire station that you, you know, so, so long has been in the making. And, you know, I'm so proud that we finally got this done. So thank you to Jose and your staff for working with you and your board. And it's just been, it's been great. So I'm so excited to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other councillors?
Oh, thank you. I hope council is willing to listen me out on my position, even if it's maybe not aligned with yours. Thank you, Jose, for that background. And I agree that the combined police department and fire station at first nine R and then River City Hall in January was determined not feasible. The discussion went directly from using River City Hall for the fight, then went for the River City Hall directly to the fire station. And then the nine R building used for city services and most of that discussion took place behind closed doors or an executive session with, in my opinion, little public engagement or transparency. I've tried on various occasions to have public discussions, not successful. The key public meeting was scheduled in May with the fire district, and I understand the fire district had to reschedule this to, I guess, a week or so later, a date that I was not available as I was traveling. The meeting took place during work hours, is not recorded. So most people in our community, including myself, have no direct information on that meeting. Since I'll go in the fire station alone option here. In my opinion, as a city, we need to, we should have evaluated the properties we could make available. And in my opinion, that's River City Hall as well as a train parking lot. Even though the latter is not the preferred location, both have restrictions such as access, mail tailings, and both have solutions to any obstacles. Both also have already fire stations designed for them over, over time. So I've heard various comments on River City Hall from our community, want to be an arts and culture corridor, an event center, a site, in my opinion, and I heard that from different people. This site is of very high significance if we ever want to connect the downtown to the river area. And if you would look at a map of Durango, you can easily see how you could bypass from Highway one sixty on Russo Avenue all the way up to the power, to the River City Hall and cross and connect to Camino del Rio, which would make, it's a long term view, a real connection from the river to the downtown. It would completely eliminate the need for a Camino underpass because you can just walk across Camino del Rio. You would gain a lot of real estate. The, the bottom line is we have not evaluated what we as a council should consider for our community at large, as well as the long term vision for our community. And I completely agree that the fire station needs a station for many years already, and we have something here, but I really think that as a council, we need to look at every, every aspect for our community, and that is including the best use and the long term use and connection of the river to the downtown. I hope council will consider that. Doing pretty good. On the train parking lot, I know there was an interest to work with the railroad and the fire district on property they own. It's a property look, and I'm open to either option. I just think as a council, we need to have that public engagement and a wider long term view when we make the final decision. The, the train parking lot adjacent to a train station noise industrial type use. Instead of use evaluating this train parking lot properly for potential use of a fire station. By coincidence, we went out for bits for development of the train parking lot. And even though that was kept confidential for quite a long time, I can say that to me, nearly all the bits that had developments that came in would be better suited, in my opinion, at the River City Hall property. So the potential use of the River City Hall property for a fire station is an option. But I think it could also be in combination with a longer view of connecting the river to the downtown area, which would change your designs. Or maybe our community life prefers the train, the train parking lot. I do not know. I hear individual people speaking and I really appreciate that, but I think it requires more public engagement. I'll leave my next comment on the, on the nine R property for the next three minutes. If anybody has a question of what I said or why I said it, feel free to do, but I understand there's already certain direction council is going.
Council Woodruff?
Uh, no direct questions. I just want to say that it's pretty awesome to be able to reap the benefits only three months in of being a counselor of all the hard work that previous counselors and previous staff members have put forth. So I think it's really nice to be able to, oh, well, get to put that feather in the cap, even though everybody else did all the legwork for us. So thank you for all the work that you all did to help get us to this point. Everybody, include DFPD and Jose. I guess in, in retrospect, for what you were saying, Council Bozeman's, I, you know, I feel like there's a lot of conversation that went back and forth. I feel like we have had some maybe not as robust conversations with the community as, as you would like, but I feel like we have had some of those conversations at length. I think we're going to continue to have those conversations. I don't think this is just, we're going to do this deal and then the conversation's over. So I look forward to continued conversations around how we're going to best move forward collectively, not just as DFPD, not just as the city, but how do we all move forward with the best urges of our community in mind, with the underpass in mind, you know, being height of mind and how we get that across the finish line. So I like to say, thank you for everybody for all the work that you put in, and I look forward to seeing this project as we, we all get our hands on, on the, on the, on the goal here at mid-November. So I know you guys are all at the fire department are eager to, to get into that property in full. And I know that we're looking forward to getting our great police department into a facility that's not a leaky old shoebox. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I would just suggest that I believe as city counselors, our community is looking at us to make some decisions. Our DFPD and our Durango Police Department have sorely inadequate facilities that need to be addressed. Specifically in relation to this decision and this real estate transfer, we have been having these discussions since before my time on council in 2017. So that's six years ago. And it's Dean Brooke said he remembers having these phone conversations in 2015. It has been too long. I think you mentioned eight years. It is time to take action and not delay further. Throughout this community journey, we've looked at so many properties. You mentioned 32. The River City Hall, I hear, is the Durango Fire Protection District's preferred site due to its location, its access and its ability for upgraded facilities. And I, I hear that loud and clear. We have evaluated at large clearly since 2015, looking at 32. And I think that it's monumental time for the city of Durango, truly, that will benefit our community for years to come, for both organizations. Both organizations have stand to gain substantially. And the community will recognize those benefits for decades into the future. By approving this real estate transfer, we allow for investment in upgraded facilities. We're reinforcing our commitment to safety and the well-being of our community. I'm thankful, very thankful that our two governmental agencies have been able to work so closely together over the last year to arrive at a mutually beneficial opportunity for both organizations for the benefit of the entire community and have worked so hard to, to get us to where we are today. So I just want to thank you for your hard work. And in my opinion, to delay any further for studies or visioning projects or to look at any other projects at this point, I think would be a travesty. We have more work to do. I think we've had quite a bit of community support for this. I've heard very little community pushback for this compared to what we experienced in the past. And so I believe that we're on the right track and I look forward to moving forward. All right, with that, we'll go to our three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I, my second section here is the 9R building for city service and the police department. And I first want to acknowledge the urgent need as well for the police station. But again, I think we have not evaluated that all the various options for a police station or new city services building. The 9R building absolutely might be a fantastic choice. But it is, in my opinion, our fiduciary duty to make sure we analyze and evaluate this better. It may be a purpose-built, state-of-the-art police station at their current location. It may be that a new building for city services, purpose-built at the current location of City Hall is better. And maybe the 9R building is better, even though renovated and not necessarily purpose-built. And I can certainly see the beautiful opportunity for the 9R building. But this discussion and this ordinance we're looking at or this ordinance is not about buying a building for 3.58 million plus River City Hall, the value, I think it's for 2.8 million. So this is a total investment of 6.4 million. It's not 6 for 6.4 million. It is an investment in the development of 9R, and that is going to be 50 million, probably in that order of magnitude. I think it's such an investment, requires more analysis, security and public engagement before spending any, any of that level of taxpayers' money. We might end up at the 9R building, but at least I would like to see that in the evaluation of different options. But here we are, six months later, and we have a packaged deal. And no options or alternatives are included, nor, nor any discussion on the long-term consequences of restrictions to connect the river to the downtown area. So I, in my opinion, we need to disconnect the sale of the River City Hall with the purchase of the 9R. I know I'm, I'm not going to get the vote, but I'm going to explain at least my position to our community. I, I, in my opinion, the, the sale of River City Hall should have been disconnected to the purchase of the 9R building. And as a city council with full transparency and public engagement, we should have evaluated urgently which property we can make available to the fire district with our long vision and our community in mind, all the needs. And at the same time, we should evaluate the current location of police department, of police station as an option versus the 9R building and make the best decision for our community financially as well as structurally. That is about my three minutes and that's it.
Great. Other counselors?
Yeah, I'm just real quick, talk about vision. Back in the early 2000s, there was a plan that the city had that identified the 9R building as a civic center. And so, you know, this has been kind of in the works and a vision and a plan for a long time. And I think sometimes certain situations, like a fire district buying an admin building and then community pushing back on it, kind of pushes us to really think about like, and make decisions quicker, quicker to the better of our community. And so I'm super excited for this to go forward and yeah, all the hard work staff and you guys have put in. Thank you so much.
Other counselors? Council Woodruff? I can't see you, sorry. You're good? Okay. Well, I guess I'll just conclude that I think this is a truly actually a historic opportunity for our community. And I think if, if this does pass, I think it will be a legacy. You know, something that those who have supported it, those who do support it and get behind it will be extremely proud of over time. I know it's, it's never possible to please everyone in the community, but in this case, I feel really confident with where we have been and the trajectory that we have been on over the last eight years to arrive at this point today, that we are in a great place in an opportu, in, with an opportunity in front of us that benefits both of our governmental agencies and our entire community. So I look forward to seeing what the conclusion to this vote is. If we could have a roll call, please, Ben.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Council Yasi?
Yes.
Council Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
Council Bosmans?
Nope.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it and thanks for being here. All right, moving on to item number 12, committee, board and liaison reports, information only. Anybody?
Yeah, let me pull up my sheet here. I had Chamber Commerce this morning. The Chamber Commerce is currently accepting nominations for the Durango Rocks Awards for 2024, which will be February, which will be Leap Day, February 29th. And you can nominate people and businesses at durangobusiness.org and that deadline is 10:31. So yeah, that is something they're gearing up for. The chamber is also paying attention to the potential for Proposition HH to hit the ballots in November as businesses pay different share of property taxes than residents. So something that they're keeping an eye on. And there's a lot of great upcoming programs for businesses and they are super excited about it. I also had, real quickly, I had a WWPF introduction meeting, which is the Wildfire and Watershed Protection Fund. Thank you for the help on the acronym. So yeah, it was great to get up to speed on the great work that was started with that fund. They hired Allison Lehman as the coordinator for the program. So she, her knowledge on wildfire management is incredible. So really cool to get to meet up with both her and Marshall Porter Norton from the county. So yeah, two great assets that we have in our community. We, it was incredible to see what the landscape scale of the work they're doing in the city and the county and what we were doing to minimize fire in our region. It's an important aspect to our community as we all know how impactful the 416 fire was for not only the environment, but also the economic side. And the first meeting is actually going to be on the 23rd of August. And yeah, it's, it's cool to see like what the county is doing to protect Durango's watershed. I mean, that's a lot of their focus since we get 90% of our water from the Florida River, what they're doing to help mitigate and protecting that water source. So it's, it's, it does, it's not very sexy work, but man, is it important. So looking forward to being a part of that.
Thank you so much.
I, I didn't send out an email about my office hours, but I had office hours after the last city council meeting. But I can just do a quick summary, but I also wanted to give a shout out because I think Council Yasi has office hours tomorrow. So if you want to come in and, and chat with her, I thought that was a, like great segue of me like doing this. So Rick Cobb came, we talked about Three Springs and we talked about the Smart 160 Trail and his support for that, which is still kind of in our plans and we're working forward. So I thought that was great. Joyce Cohen came in and chatted with me a little bit. Seth Fertney came and he was here, he's not here right now, but we chatted about kind of like the system with now that there's no boards and commissions and the new fab board, which was great. And then Jason Mininer came in and talked about a year-round hockey rink. And so that was on the plan a while ago, but kind of got pushed down. So anyways, thought it was super interesting. Some good stuff there. Then I had the alliance meeting. They talked about housing prices and mortgage rates, which are obviously high, La Plata County higher than city and then Bayfield after that. Logan gave a housing with DAR, gave a housing update for Durango and Bayfield. They talked about the grants, the Opportunity Now Grants that they got, they had over 65 applicants and eight were awarded and the alliance got 1.25 million dollars. And so that was great. Summit, the Economic Development Alliance Summit for 2023, which is a great conference to go to if you've never been to it. It's at the Sky U Casino in September. And so I'll make sure that I keep counsel up to date on that because those are, that's a really great conference. Then we talked about the workforce housing investment plan for sustainable housing funds. And I won't get too in-depth to that, but I know the alliance and Mike French is working with Jose and Chuck to hopefully find some way that we can work some sort of sustainable housing funding for our community. And so it's great. There was talk of maybe childcare, housing and transportation, but it's looking more just housing. We don't know for sure. And I think that was it. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thanks so much.
Yes, I do have council hours tomorrow, I think noon to 1:30 at the library. They changed it from City Hall here to the library. At any rate, last week, the 13th, I attended a affordable housing conference here at Durango at the Rec Center. And basically it was presented by CHOPA and we talked about like Prop 123 and how to get funding through there and how it impacts all the different cities and counties throughout the Southwest here. And so that was very interesting because I had a chance to meet with some of the local administrators to these programs. And then also, when was it on? When we had the youth meeting? Yeah, when we had the, the water plot travel consultation with the youth tribe. I thought that went very well. You know, there's a lot of listening that we have to do on the part of the city. And I think it's a good start that we started that because, you know, we're partners here with them and how to allocate that water and plan for the future. And I think that's about it. But my council hours are tomorrow. You can check it out on the website at the library about noon.
Thank you so much, Council Yasi. Council Bosmans?
Now, the only one I had was with the tribal consultation and you covered that well. I think we have to keep working on a good communication and trust, I guess, is the key word that came out of that meeting. So thank you for that update.
Yeah, it was a good meeting. I was glad we were there. And yes, and I don't have any reports myself, but I'm glad you have office hours tomorrow. That's excellent. Thank you. And thank you, Jessica Buehl, for doing that last week. So, all right, with that, we'll move on to 13.1. Proposed ordinance banning the sale of kittens and puppies at pet stores. So just a brief introduction here, this is an introduction of an ordinance only. If there is council support of this ordinance, it will be placed on the agenda for the next meeting for consideration, discussion and possible action. This is not the time for discussion of the ordinance itself or the merits of it. But Council Bosmans, who has brought this ordinance forward for introduction, can state his rationale for bringing it forward and present a motion for council for consideration of the ordinance at the next meetings. Council Bosmans, would you like to make a motion and introduce the ordinance?
I'm trying to think, figure out what, what, am I making a motion for a proposed ordinance? Is that the way you say it?
Okay.
I mean, I can help out a little bit if you want, just for, for background and this is kind of part of the new process. But this was an ordinance that was proposed by a citizen, I think was brought up in a discussion session. A model ordinance was provided. Counselor Bozeman's took interest in it. I was directed to provide or to develop an ordinance unique to the city of Durango, on which I did. It is now set for introduction. And if it gets votes to go forward in the process, there would be a formal first reading and public hearing on it at the next meeting.
And a second reading after that.
A final reading on the consent agenda, one meeting after the next meeting.
That's a four-step process we're going through. Anyway, so I make
Brought by the charter, but yeah.
It's good. And I think we're just in that transition period. So I make a motion for a proposed ordinance banning the sale of kittens and puppies at pet stores.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from council, very limited discussion from council, thoughts? All right, roll call, please, Ben.
Council Yasi?
No.
Council Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Council Bosmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
All right. We are going to 13.2. Proposed ordinance repealing Chapter 5, Article 8, Durango Local Licensing Authority and Amending Chapter 13 Licenses and Business Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for purposes of enacting the city clerk's office's local licensing authority and declaring an effective date. I believe staff has a presentation on this?
Actually, it's not a presentation. This goes back to the, the new process in which the next agenda I've worked with Mark and he's accepted our change because sometimes this is a little confusing for staff, but this is actually really what you would call your request for public hearing. So it really is just a motion to set a public hearing. So moving forward in working with Mark, I think there's some familiarity that might help. And it's probably a good time with the public is introduction of ordinance and request for public hearing will be the title of this section. And we would have a first reading of the ordinance and public hearing as the title for the next step. And then the final step would be approval of ordinances in our consent agenda and how it normally happens. So this
So this is to kind of free me familiarize yourself with what we're probably more familiar with, the request for the public hearing, which normally was on consent. So it really is, does the council want to have a public hearing and first reading on this item? That's what's up for discussion today. Am I correct, Mark?
You are correct. And just to kind of mirror what happened with a citizen bringing an idea forward that came through a study session. We had someone in the staff come forward with an idea to make the liquor license processing more efficient. We spoke about it, you know, during our regular days at work here. And did you do a presentation at a study session? I don't recall.
Uh, not at a study session. I practiced it with the staff at the last one, but I'm prepared to do it on eight, one.
So this is the, okay, right. So this is the time for you guys to officially vote on it, getting a public hearing and a first reading like Jose just explained.
So I'd like to make a motion for a proposed ordinance and public hearing, repealing Chapter 5, Article 8, Durango Local Licensing Authority, amending Chapter 13 Licenses and Business Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango for the purpose of enacting the city clerk's office as the local licensing authority and declaring an effective date.
I'll second. Do we have any limited discussion? Roll call please, Ben.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for helping us through that, staff. Moving on now to, we are skipping down to 16, I believe, public comment on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to comment? Thank you. Okay, sweetie Marbury, and for this, we will still limit to three minutes. We won't respond from the dais. You know, the whole shabiel, don't need to tell you. And then we'll check for virtual commenters.
Uh, I came tonight to ask about working groups for next steps. I was at the Financial Advisory Board meeting the last time they met and I looked at the budget for 2023 and 2024. And I put the two together and it's 1.4 million dollars is in the budget coming from the 2015 sales tax and the 2019 street tax. And my question is, where are the working groups for the next steps? I'm very concerned that businesses are not included in this proposal. I'm asking you to include the businesses to address their concerns. This council should include the 75 downtown businesses that, that objects to next steps. If the new counselors don't have that letter, I believe the city manager does, that was signed by 75 downtown businesses that are very much afraid of losing their livelihood. I would hope that this business, that this council is business friendly because we live in a historic downtown. Obviously I'm against next steps. So I'm asking, when is the next town hall meeting? Right here, we could fill it up with people who are concerned about it. When are the working groups going to be, be formed? City council should be listening to the central business district because they are the people who hire employees, who pay the sales tax and are really the face of the downtown, the first people that are met by tourists and locals who go downtown. Find out what, what is the concern of those 75 businesses? Seek them out. Show them that you care about their businesses. I'm encouraging the new counselors to find the list and go and talk to Rio Grandland, The Strater, The Main Mall, Father's Daughter's Pizza and everyone else who has signed that list. Find out what they're afraid, afraid of. Why are they afraid of losing their livelihood? That's something that every city council should be listening to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on now to what? Oh, online, thank you. Do we have any virtual commenters?
Yes, Mayor, John Simpson has raised his hand.
Thank you.
Mayor Youssef John Simpson, City Resident. I'm here to discuss Item 6.1, the annual financial report. As counselors, you should concern yourself with the cash position, not the awards or unmodified opinions. We got those when Julie Brown was stealing money. The city's cash, cash position is on page 19. The statement of net position. For restricted money, we have 15 million and unrestricted, we have 101 million for a total of $116 million of cash, which was a 26 million over the prior year. Council approved a budget for 2022 that predicted we would end the month, the year with only 56 million. But here we are with 116 million. They missed it by $60 million. Counselors, you should demand that staff put forth a believable budget instead of their shock and awe financial outlook. So what funds are the troubled funds that are causing such a huge fund balance? Taxes dedicated to Parks and Rec is one problem. The combined fund balance for the 2015 and 25 sales tax was $13 million at the end of 2022. I'm a huge fan of Parks and Rec, but there's a problem managing capital projects. And now the city is discussing extending the 2005 tax? That will only exasperate the problem of not being able to effectively manage capital projects. The problem is not money. The problem is management. Other problem funds are the new housing fund, building maintenance fund and technology replacement fund. If housing is so important to council, why was only 621,000 spent on housing last year, with the majority being city staff and consultants? This should be a wake-up call. City can best help with housing by keeping water bills low, sewer bills low, property taxes reasonable and sales taxes reasonable. Also, the renewal partnership fund siphoned about a million dollars into it. The URA is not taking small amounts of incremental taxes. The transportation fund went up a million dollars, but all we hear is gloom and doom scenario of the future. The capital equipment raised replacement fund only spent $1.7 million, but was budgeted for 5 million. The concerns of Counselor Bosmans must stop being deflected by the city manager on this fund. The water fund continues to hover around 18 million. Isn't it time to refund the water fund? Staff has proven they don't have a believable plan for this fund. And the library, the annual report can resolve the internal fight on council. Page nine shows the library as a general fund expense, just like your salary. And on 88, the joint sales tax funds, fund received from the county is a general fund revenue, just like any other sales tax. The citizens have never told you to direct the joint sales tax fund to the library. The library is funded just like every other general fund expense from the general fund. Um, the, the decision to keep Sundays closed at the library makes no sense. We have the money to do it, open the library. And finally, staff told you they were unable to find a few million dollars to pay for solar panels. Staff needs to be held accountable for telling you one thing, but there's 116 million dollars of reasons why they're wrong. Mayor Youssef?
Great. All right, thank you. I think with that, we can move on to our executive session. Item number 17.
Motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion for discussion and, oops, sorry, to go into executive session for discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter specifically to conduct the annual evaluation of the municipal judge as permitted in CRS 24-6-402-F2.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Discussion, roll call please.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
And Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Thirty-one, and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were, municipal court judge Sarah Law, counsel Yaizy Malissa Youssef, Jessica Buell, Dave Woodruff, and Olivier Bosmans. For the record, we met in executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter specifically to conduct the annual evaluation of the municipal judge. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go in the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Do I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.